...of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. One in the morning.
Thank you very much, and I do apologize to those that are here and to the viewing public that may or may not have been waiting around. We were trying to get cleaned up on a budget hearing that got postponed from a week or so ago, and so I appreciate your patience. By way of announcements, we have several upcoming meetings in January and February. Wednesday, the 29th, here in the Matthew Thornton Room at 6:30, we're going to have our, hopefully, final budget meeting where we'll be discussing any changes that the town council feels we need to be making and getting updates based on things that have come up over the past several days. Thursday, January 30th, is also a budget meeting if necessary due to snow, which we hope doesn't happen. Thursday, February 6th, is a special meeting.
Due to the way that the primaries falling, on Tuesday, the 11th of February, was the last day for ratification of union contracts.
Oh.
We moved it up to February 6th for ratification of union contracts.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Because I didn't think you guys wanted to have a meeting and do what you have to do with the pollings places.
Yeah. So Thursday, February 13th, is a regular meeting, and then Thursday, February 27th, is also a regular meeting. All of those are here in the Matthew Thornton Room, starting at 7 o'clock. Budget meetings start at 6:30. Do you have any other announcements, Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Watson Park Skating Rink is open for the season as long as the weather cooperates. It was a little warm today. Also, we have a contractor on site at the skating rink today and tomorrow to install the light poles bases and conduit for the new skating rink lights. We are waiting shipment of the lights and the light poles and hope to have them installed as soon as possible.
Great. Thank you. Any questions on the announcements? Moving to comments from the press and public, if anybody has any comments they want to make on our agenda items. Brings us to recognitions. Excuse me?
Ben's raising his hand.
What, if you want to come up to make a comment, now's a good time.
Okay, Ben Niles, 11 for New Drive.
Thank you.
I gave a presentation at the planning board meeting during their public hearing, and gave them a written copy, and I'd like to provide you with the same written copy to refer to. Basically, it's my critique of the pedestrian and bicycle plan for the Route 3 corridor, so that in the event that something would come to the town council from the planning board, you would have the benefit of this research that I've done to date to see quickly the flaws in the plan and how to deal with whatever comes before you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. If you want to just give it to Paul, then he'll pass it out.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Now, this brings me to my second topic, and that is townwide communications. When I was at the public hearing, I thought there'd be a substantial group of people there interested in, you know, the prospects of sidewalks, possible bike path, et cetera, et cetera. And there was four sophomore students from the high school and one of their parents. The student spoke as to the need for sidewalks to facilitate their foot traffic to the schools they attend, and that's part of their school project for the year. And I thought that was very appropriate. I gave my presentation. There was no one else in attendance that spoke. There was one gentleman that attended and was silent. That's it. And my concern is, you know, is the town functioning in the dark relative to the residents? In the past, there used to be a coverage of all town meetings by the National Telegraph reporter and sometimes a union leader reporter. Well, that's now all gone. They have cut back so much staff and laid off so many reporters. The only thing in the Telegraph that is reported is for the city of Nashua. Just like now with the union leader, the only thing that is reported there is the city of Manchester. Very seldom something else, occasionally, but not much. And people I talked to, you know, that have gotten the papers for years are quitting the papers because there's a lack of meaningful information. And so the question I pose to the town council today is, how do we communicate what's going on in town and what things should be of interest to the residents and taxpayers? Be it budget items, plans, programs, whatnot. You know, is it appropriate to, for the town, to create a town blog that puts information out there and people go there to want to receive it? Or do you set up a push email for all town voters that would sign up and provide their email address? The former may be the better way to go, but there needs to be a way to communicate from the town to the residents, so they're aware of what's happening, what's going on, and they can make their personal decision as to whether they want to be involved and what their position is. And it all leads up to when it comes to making decisive actions, like voting on the warrant articles in the annual budget. They are informed as residents and taxpayers rather than being in the dark. So I don't have the answer, but I just pose that to you, and I think it's something that is a need to make our town function better and for the residents to have awareness and confidence in our town management, our town officials. I think that's important for a healthy relationship between town government and the residents and taxpayers.
And I wouldn't disagree with you at all. In fact, we talk about it every year at our annual retreat as to how we can improve our communications. We do have mailing lists that people can get on if they contact the town manager's office.
Okay.
To hear about various different meetings by email. Everything's on our town website, or should be, for all of our meetings.
Well, that's what I do. I go to the website now, but it doesn't give me really any detail, just tells what the schedule is.
Well, I believe, if you, like the planning board, if you go into there, you can actually see the agenda and you can click on each one of those items.
I know. I see the agenda, and I can see the...
All of those items are clickable.
The minutes. Yes.
No, the agenda items are clickable to see what the backup material is that's available.
Yeah.
So I, and I think our council agendas...
Same way.
Same way. So those should be accessible to get the background information. You can always contact the town office. I mean, there's only so much we can do if there's not a newspaper that's publishing, but we are making an effort to try and make electronic communication available to people. And we also do a mailer every year before the election to try and explain all of the warrant articles.
Yeah, I receive that.
And give good and solid information on what's going on there. So if you do have suggestions, and I'm sure the council continues to kaputz on that thing, but to try and understand ways to improve that, but that is an ongoing annual effort of ours to try and figure out how we can better communicate. So we're wide open to suggestions.
Well, I'm not a techie, but I have a couple friends that are, so I'll pick their brains and see if they have any thoughts that are feasible for a town our size.
Okay. Awesome.
Because, to me, the measure of citizen and worship of what's happening is how many attend various meetings and speak up on certain issues.
You'd be surprised how many people watch us on TV. I mean, all of these meetings are televised, and so people can watch them. It's an after the fact, although they stream several of them live, so that people do show up every once in a while because they've heard the discussion and they want to come add to it.
That part of it's good, but what we, the other measure is, I think, and I don't know if you can count how many people view it, is there any way you...
I don't know. We'd have to ask the media.
You know, that'd be interesting to know, because that'd be an important measurement. And the other measurement is the actual citizen participation, such as what I'm doing tonight. That's an important measurement, and that's...
It is, and we've noticed a serious drop-off when the TV and the stuff like that was available. I mean, there used to be, a lot of people would come to the annual meeting. They don't need to do that so much if they can see and hear what's going to go on, and that's an ongoing battle or issue that we have with how do we best communicate with the town? And we're definitely interested in finding out ways to improve that.
Although, I would hope they'd come to the annual meeting, because watching it after the fact, the sacrifice, their vote, or foregone their vote.
Well, for any changes that happen to the warrant at the annual meeting, absolutely. Yeah, so I encourage people to come to it.
Yeah.
It scares me when there's only 50 people there, because then a small group that has something that they really want to go grind can make changes that impact everybody.
Exactly, and may not be representative of what the town as a whole wants to do.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Do you have, Peter, you want...
It's not, I agree with what Ben said. I just, and we're going to have Lynn here in a minute, but I think there's 18,000 registered voters in every year, year after year, for April, for the local, we continue to have 3,000, 3,500 people in this press house. And, yeah, I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
We're still in public comment. Anybody else that wants to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Recognitions, resignations, and retirements, we don't have any appointments. Presidential primary discussion, we've asked Len, our town moderator, Len Christensen, to come and just kind of either go over the details. We probably know most of the stuff, but just kind of for the general public's information. Doesn't like getting it from the director's mouth.
Actually, I'm going to throw one more thing on you, if I may.
Go ahead.
Well, I sit there and I look and I say, you know, you guys are sitting there at the table, taking photos for those people who don't have or won't produce a photo ID. We have a few of those. You look bored, so we figured we'd get you something else to do. Diane and I have been talking about anticipated attendance or voters showing up. I'm going to drop my expected number primarily because of the absentee requests. Typically, we would get 1,500 to 1,600 absentee requests. We've got a couple of hundred this year.
Is that all?
Is that all?
Yes, which is surprising.
Wow.
I can make comments, but I'm not going to.
Probably the same ones that everybody else would make. I've cut back a little bit on the number of ballot inspectors, although I usually have quite a few for this election, because we do have a lot of people. We actually have 41 ballot inspectors working, which is quite a job trying to corral that many people. And I would put in a plug that if people are interested, if they're a registered voter and they would be interested in helping, I know the supervisors of the checklist are also looking for assistance with registering people at the polls that day. So contact me, contact Town Hall, say, you know, I'm interested, and we'll go from there. Typically, what will happen is town council is required to be, at least two of you is required to be there all day long at each polling site. Either you or a designee, I don't expect any one of you to be there for 12 hours, which is essentially what it would take if we have three polling sites. I'm there for 12 hours, but actually more than that, but anyway. A designee, just somebody, so that particularly when the AG's office walks in and says, where are your two town councils? I can say, right there and right there. And we don't get that xed on the checklist, because they do come, they're always there. We're one of the largest polling sites, and so therefore, they show up, they go through all three sites, checking to see that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, that the appropriate notices are posted, and that the supervisors can answer the questions that they ask, and we can answer the questions they ask us and town clerks. So we've been doing it for a while. We've kind of got it down to a routine. I have an excellent crew of people working for me, working for the voters. They know what they're doing. We've done it long enough that all we have to do is kind of update ourselves on any changes that come, and there's been a couple little ones this time. One of them is the fact that up until this year, if you had an absentee ballot, a family member could deliver it to the town the day before the election, but it could not be delivered the day of. That's been changed, so that now it can be received. It used to be it had to come in by mail, so. So that's, you know, we tweak it a little bit each time, so that's just one of the changes. But other than that, I'm expecting we will have an influx of new voters. Supervisors of the checklist take care of registering them. What we do to kind of speed the process, these poor folks have already stood in line waiting to register.
Register.
I kind of feel bad saying, okay, now that you've registered, take your registration and go to the appropriate alphabet letter and stand in another line. So what we've done each year is we set up a separate table. So you put your checklist along, and then one table on the end is new registrations. So if you've just registered, you take your card, you go to that table, and you get your ballot from there. So what I'm going to do is ask you guys if you would do, handle that as well.
Sure. Absolutely.
It's hard work. You've got to read and find out what they want and make sure you give them the right ballot.
I'll have to study up on that.
Yeah, I know, but then you also have to record their name and address, so.
Oh.
But I think it, you know, it's something that as long as you're there, take the few pictures that you need to do, and I'll ask you if you'd be willing to help by doing that as well. That would take some of the pressure off of us. We have two ballots. Essentially, there are two elections going on here.
Yeah.
The Republicans are having one, and the Democrats are having one. Those are the only people that can vote. If you're not in one of those parties, you can't vote. And yes, I know, well, I'm undeclared, so, well, in order to vote...
You have to declare.
You have to join one of those parties to vote. That's just the rules that go on.
That's the way it goes. You can.
If you come in undeclared, you can go back undeclared. But if you come in as one or the other, you can't go back to undeclared. You have to go down to Town Hall.
Well, and you can't change on the spot either.
And you cannot change on the spot. The last time you could have changed your affiliation was back in October. So there's, yeah, it's prior to the filing period. We have quite a few people running. There are 17 on the Republican ballot.
Really?
There are 33 on the Democratic ballot, so that gives you a total of 49 people running. Got the math bill?
Do we have just one paper, front and back, or did you...
No, there are two, you've got two elections.
Well, I know, but for each one, for Democrats, it's...
No, it's all on one page.
It's all on one page.
17, 33. 49 people running.
Awesome. Plus write-ins?
There's one person that is on both ballots.
Really?
That's your difference between 17 and 33 add up to...
50.
There's only 49 people running.
Because that one person...
Because there's one person that is the same on both ballots, which you can do that.
Okay.
But Rocky is interested in having...
His name show up?
Either party nominate him as president, so there are...
$2,000 for a very short piece of fame, right?
Hey, he can go to his grandchildren's and say, see?
I was on the first in the nation in primary. Yep.
There are, of the 33, six of them are women. Of the 17, two of them are women. So just little tidbits for you.
Okay. Little fun facts we can pass out at the election.
Yeah, yeah. You could do trivia. So if you're there at least quarter or seven in the morning, polls close roughly at 7:00. I need five of you there after 7:00 to seal the ballot boxes. You can decide who wants to be there. You can leave, go back, have dinner, and come back, because it'll take us a while to count the ballots.
Take about an hour or so to, at least.
Yeah, yeah. And I have to get the, all of the ballots in and the results in from all three places before I announce, because we are one town.
Right.
And you have the results from the town, not from each individual polling place.
Each place, yeah.
Right. Anything you want from me?
Any questions? Peter?
Why not keep the polls open until 8:00? You've got a lot of people that are commuting back at the end of the day from Massachusetts.
That's your choice.
I have no problem with that. I think in a big election like this, there's a lot of folks that are trying to get back from work, and that extra hour helps them out to get in to vote.
That's what the absentee ballot for those people come into play, and that's, and I know we've got a number of them that do.
Yeah, but a lot of people don't do it, we know that.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, reality showed in the past, it may be different now, but it showed that very few people came in after 7:00. And that's the reason, because we did it.
We used to be open till 8:00.
And we voted on this several years ago.
Yeah, we were open at 8:00, and at one point, we decided to drop back to 7:00, because there were so few people that came in between 7:00 and 8:00.
Even on these primaries and the presidential elections?
Yeah.
It fizzles right out.
I mean, I've worked plenty of them, so I just...
Yeah, but isn't it a...
So have I.
Yeah, you know, you may have worked a few more than me. Is school going to be open that day?
School is going to be closed. I have worked on this for over, I've been doing this for over 30 years.
Thank you.
I have worked on this to get them to close school, and last year, Marge finally said to me, you know, we're considering this, and I said, yes, please. And they put it in the calendar, because we couldn't give them a date, but they put it in the calendar as a floating day, schools will be closed.
Great.
Fabulous.
Thanks.
Because it makes it so much easier for us.
Paul?
And so much safer for the school.
Right, right.
Back on the hours, Len, don't you have the authority, though, if the line is out the door at 7:00, you can keep it open?
Officially, no.
Okay.
What I can do, and this is a discussion we've had with the Secretary of State, what I can do is at 7:00, anyone that is in line, I can put somebody at the end of that line. So if you've got 300 people going out the door, I can put somebody at the end of that line, and when that person gets in, anybody between there and will vote. So we have kept it open sometimes later.
Well, that's just it. If they're in, I don't want people to say, oh, it's...
It's too late.
It's too late, you know, I'm in line at 7:00, I'm not going to be able to vote.
No, no, no.
They can still vote.
If you're in line, you can. There have been a couple of people that have walked in just as I'm closing the polls, and I'm saying, just go do it. I've had, occasionally, there's one person that'll walk in half an hour later and say, oh, and I'm sorry. Not at that point.
That's a little too late, yeah.
Yeah, but generally, I mean, we do everything we can to try and make it easy for people to vote to get there, and anything we can to make it easier, to make the lines smoother. We constantly monitor the lines. If, you know, the M-line, it's almost always the M-line...
It is.
Gets too long, we'll break up the book and do MA here and ME here. And if we have to do that, we may grab one of you to say, here, sit here. But we do everything we can to try and make it easier and...
Finley, you have a question?
No, I was just...
Oh.
I knew Paul was looking for you.
Okay. Traffic-wise in the polling places, I think we want everybody to go in a circle, not go back out the way they came in. Is that true, or do we really care?
Generally speaking, down at St. John Newman, they come in the main entrance to the school, they vote, and they go out the back entrance in that room.
In that cafeteria, yeah.
So, yes, it's a circle through. At J Muse, they come in the main entrance, through the lobby and in the main door, they go out the far door, right by the dumpsters.
Right.
The middle school is always an issue, because there is one door to that room.
To easily get to the parking lot, yeah.
Yes. There's the other door, there are two other doors, but they go into the school.
Into the building, you'd have to go in by the office and all the room.
But when the school was closed that time?
We are changing it.
They came in.
This time. That was the presidential, because we knew it was going to be so big. What we're talking about doing this time is having them continue to come in the same door, because everybody's used to going to that door. They talked about using a different door, and I said, no, everybody wants, this is where they're going. And what we may do is we may exit a different door. I believe, and we've got to go down to the school to check it, to exit from the front, you've got a long hallway and kind of a round, I believe there is an exit right beside the cafeteria, right beside the kitchen. So as you're facing, as you go in, you go out the far door, and it's just a quick walk around the corner. We're going to look at possibly doing that.
Okay. I only bring that up, because if anybody's watching, they can hopefully be aware that we're not trying to be mean, saying, please go that way, but it does help the flow.
Yeah, no, coming in, yep. Actually, once you've voted, it's illegal for you to come back through the poll, through the...
Through the checker, the checklist section, yeah.
Yeah, it happens, but we try to minimize it. But, yeah, we're looking at that for the, possibly for the middle school, just because if school's in session, there's no way I can do it. There's absolutely no way I can do it, because the kids are there, so.
Janine, you, as a state rep, do you have a question or a comment?
Well, I do, I have two questions, actually. One is, can you hear me from here?
Yeah.
I'll be short.
You are short. You are short.
Vermin Supreme is a Libertarian, and I know people that are supporting him. Is there a Libertarian ballot?
There is not. They are not an official party.
Oh, okay, good. And my second question, because people ask, is I, like, I've had people come to the polls at J Muse and then find out that they were actually supposed to go to St. John Newman's to vote.
And they are sent to St. John Newman's to vote.
Right, but they're not happy about it. So is there, is it online? Can they look up their street so that they know?
Yeah, they sure can. It's the Secretary of State's website.
Okay.
And I've posted that on Facebook. It's posted on the town website under Town Clerk Elections. There is a link. You go into the Secretary of State's website, you put in your address, and it'll tell you which polling site you go to. We've told people this time and time again, so.
Thank you.
You want to note, call me.
That's a good thing to repeat.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for bringing it up, because I was going to skip that.
There's also another place where if you're using an absentee ballot, again, on the Secretary of State's website, you can track your absentee ballot to see that it's actually come in and is being...
Oh.
Because the Town Clerk records every one of them that goes out with the address, and as they come back in...
They mark them.
They're logged in.
Logged in.
So they're tracked.
Peter?
I'd like to, and I don't know if this is the right format I'm doing it, but I'd like to make a motion that we, this is not the...
I don't think we can change the hours at this time.
You can't change the hours now.
Can't change them now?
No.
No, it's much too close.
For the future, if you want to talk about it, certainly.
Because I think, especially when the presidential election comes up, I think it should be 6:00. I see so many people lined up in the morning. I don't know why, we used to, I believe we used to open up at 6:00 AM.
We never did.
You never did?
When I started, we opened at 8:00.
All right.
And closed at 8:00.
Definitely a reason not to do that, but I see some of these big elections...
And I was, I was the one that pushed it back till 7:00, so that people could get in.
I just think some of these big elections, you know, and I, you know, open up at 6:00. The people that are trying to get to work have long distances to go. Let them in, and I still agree, I think, on the big elections, 8:00. Let the people get home and vote.
That's a discussion you guys can have.
We can have that discussion. I guess the biggest concern that has been expressed over time is to try and be consistent. So if we try to tell people, well, for this election, you can vote till 8:00, but for this election, you can't, it creates some serious problems.
Yeah, you're either going to make it for all of them, or you're not going to make it for any of them.
I see that. Okay.
Well, I know. Well, I know, I understand the issue, and like I said, one of the first things I did, one of the first couple of years, was I pushed it back till seven o'clock in the morning, just for that reason. And we get a lot of people, sometimes there aren't that many, but we do get people that come in between seven and eight. But I will tell you, even when we were open between, until eight o'clock at night, even on the big ones, there are very, very few people that come through after seven. Not to say you can't do it.
We hear about people who say, "Well, I realized it was 7:05, so I turned around and went home." You know, so there are people that don't show up in these, and they know seven o'clock, so they could've either planned it in the morning or in the evening, or absentee.
Like I said, we do everything we can, and we even stretch it a little bit to make sure that people, you know, if somebody shows up at 6:58 at J-Muse and they're supposed to vote at the middle school, we'll make arrangements. You know, if they show up at two o'clock in the afternoon, now I'm gonna send them to the middle school. But if it's last minute, I'm not gonna prevent somebody from voting who came there to vote. We just, that's just not what we do.
We need to decide amongst ourselves, I guess, a schedule that we're gonna cover the polling places.
If you guys just wanna know, let Paul or Eileen know.
We'll get the information to you.
And they'll get the information to me, so I know who to expect, where and when.
Okay.
That would be good.
All right. Any other questions, Barbara?
Shall I?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay.
She's our official scheduler.
Fine. We good?
I'm good. Anybody else? Nope, we're good.
It's my fun day. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, appreciate it.
Did you get your counting done? I apologize for not being able to help, but I was...
We took us, we took twenty thousand ballots. It took us a little over two hours.
So you said you were scaling back your guesstimate. Are you gonna, willing to publicize what your guesstimate is?
You're pretty good on your guesstimate.
Not quite yet.
Not quite yet, okay.
Not quite yet. We've got all the ballots there. They're not split equally, obviously, because I'm sure we're gonna have a lot more Democrats voting than we are Republicans. One never knows.
Nope.
So...
We'll find out.
Yep, but they'll all be there. That's, again, something that you can help with at the end of the night. We have to count all those ballots, again, not just the voted one. We have to count all of the ballots before we pack them away, so...
Right.
Yes, all hands on deck.
Which is why you had to count them in the first place, is to make sure that you still have the right numbers.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Excellent.
Where are we at? Public hearing. We don't have any public hearing planned. Legislative updates from state reps. We have two. Come on up. Paul, is that your laptop? You need it, or...
No, I have a question. I can shut it down.
Why don't you shut it, just, yeah.
How about the tape?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Janine, you went first last time, so we'll swap...
Oh, we already reached, he can go first.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
Great.
For the record, I'm Janine Nodder. Some of the hearings this week were delayed, rescheduled for next week, but we still had over a hundred and eighty hearings. And just so everyone knows, the hearings are all happening at once. So down the hall, there's a big crowd, 'cause they're all, you know, in election law, and over in Rep's Hall, they're having another contentious bill being heard. So, and we all have our own committees that we're supposed to be at, so in order to go testify on a bill that we're co-sponsoring, we have to actually leave our committee. But I wanted you to know that even though sometimes we're absent from our committee, missing a hearing, we do catch up with our committee members to find out what we missed. As long as we're there for the vote, and we know what we're voting on, then it's all good. So I just wanted to let you know that. And the only bill I wanted to highlight this week, 'cause there's just so many, is one of the ones that I co-sponsored, which was relative to the use of the funds from the drug forfeiture, asset forfeiture, and I did mention that last week. We had the hearing yesterday, and we had members from the Heartland Institute come out, fly out to testify. I had gone to their convention in New Orleans in December, and I do plan on going to their energy convention in Las Vegas in May. I have some books that they left. This one is Ten State Solutions to Emerging Issues, so I'm gonna leave these for you, if you're interested in reading those, and then passing them on. And we also had a mother from Merrimack come up and testify for the first time. She'd never been to the State House, and this is hard, 'cause it's very emotional, because she's my neighbor, and her son was my son's, one of my son's best friends growing up, and he lost his life to drug addiction on Thanksgiving. So while we were doing the 5K, all the firefighters, policemen were in my neighborhood, and they were too late. So we needed this personal story to add credence to this bill and why it's needed. And it's not a tax increase, it's using existing funds. So currently, the forfeit, asset forfeiture funds, the money goes to the Attorney General's Office, and then they distribute it through, I have it written down, lost my place, to the governor, let's see. This bill will move the administration of the money from the Attorney General's Office to the governor and the executive council, because they have better knowledge of what drug treatment programs are in place and would benefit from this money to help those who are most in need. So it'll move the money from who's distributing it, and also show more transparency, 'cause right now, the Department of Justice said that they don't know, they have a percentage of how much money is going to drug treatment, but there's no itemization, so this would solve that problem and help the opioid crisis. So, and currently, the Institute of Justice gave New Hampshire a D ranking for our transparency in drug forfeiture. So this bill does two things, and at the hearing, it seemed to have bipartisan support, so I'm hopeful that it's going to pass.
Okay, awesome.
Great, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it for this week, for this time.
Thank you, appreciate the update.
Okay. Hi, I'm Representative Wendy Thomas. I haven't been here for a while, been fighting some fires on the home front, but I'm back, so I have a few things to cover. The first is a House resolution that was entered, a U.S. House resolution that was entered by Representative Pappas and Representative Dingell. It's encouraging the EPA to maintain and strengthen requirements under the Clean Water Act and reverse ongoing administrative actions to weaken this landmark bill and protections for U.S. waters. I was asked to be on the conference, the press conference call for this, so I worked with them on this. I'll leave a copy of it, I don't have one for each of you, so... And Representative Pappas did come to Merrimack to see the construction for the MVD filtration system.
Right.
In general news, I was recently named the New Hampshire Lead for the National Caucus for Environmental Legislators, in part due to the work with water, so that was pretty, very exciting. I sit on the UNH Hillsborough Cooperative Extension Advisory Council, and I just wanna make sure that you guys know that New Hampshire, the New Hampshire Farm, Forest, and Garden Expo is gonna be held at the Doubletree Hotel in Manchester February fourteenth and fifteenth. It's seven dollars to get in, and thirteen and under for free. This is a lot of fun. I've taken my kids many times over the years, and I've put up information about the cooperative extension on Facebook, and there's a lot of gardeners in Merrimack, and there's a lot of farmers and everything, so you'll be getting more information on that. I, in my email, in my mail at the State House today, I got the quick guide to New Hampshire's retirement system for members, retirees, employers, and lawmakers. Any of you guys need this information? I can pass it on.
Thanks, Lynn.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks.
And then, the other new, before I get to the big piece of information, there's a town hall tomorrow with Congressman Andy Levin from Michigan on clean water and PFAS regulation, what's being done down in Washington, and how it's going to affect towns like ours. It's going to be 1:30 to 3:00 tomorrow here in this room. SB 684, this was that Medicaid to school bill that I've mentioned a couple times before. My original bill was pulled, and I'm a co-sponsor of this bill with Senator Khan. Today, they had the hearing for it. I have the original bill, and I have the amended bill. The amended bill basically adds psychologists to the designation of people that can be licensed. But, and DHHS, who are the ones that did that emergency ruling that has hurt us so badly, they agree with this bill. They're behind it. So I spoke with Chair Barnes from the school board, and they reviewed this bill the other night, and so she, in the midnight hour, sent a letter that I presented in my testimony this afternoon, very effective letter. We should all be really, really pleased with the school board. Because of this emergency ruling, and I'll quote here, she said, "We wanted to let you know that with this new rule, we are only able to be reimbursed for fifty thousand dollars in Medicaid claims against a projection that was closer to five hundred thousand." So because of this ruling, we potentially missed out on four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we had had prior to this ruling. So that, this is what this bill would correct, so that we would get the funding again. After I testified, Henry Lippman, who is with DHHS and who is the Medicaid Director, came up to me and gave me his card, and he said, "Have your school board contact me, because I can help them get back some of that money." So it looks like we're gonna be able to get back some money that was taken away, so that's really, really good news, and the only reason that happened is because Chairman Barnes wrote that in the letter, and it's a very, very effective letter, and I'll give you a copy of that as well.
Okay, thanks.
So, well done for all. And then, just the last thing, it's not really up at the State House, but I know we're talking about streets, not street signs, but traffic lights and that kind of stuff. I come home late on Exit 11, and because of the apartments that are starting to be filled and everything, it's not unusual for people to try to run across this unlit road at night. And sometimes they fall, I've seen them fall a couple times. With more people getting in those apartments, we're gonna have to figure out something, whether it's a pedestrian light or something like that. That's an accident waiting to happen, a tragic accident. So I don't know who does that, I don't know how it's incorporated, but it needs to be put on somebody's radar.
And it is. The Planning Board's been looking into that.
They're the ones?
Every time they get an opportunity, they've talked about it, trying to find a way to get a pedestrian crossing anywhere along in that area.
Yeah, it's...
So it is being reviewed and looked at.
And if they're not wearing any reflective gear, that's really scary for a driver.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's...
Yeah, that's scary for both sides. I don't wanna be the one that hits anybody.
Yeah, okay. So that's it for me.
Okay. I'm gonna just throw this out for fun, because yesterday, we had a discussion with the wastewater treatment plan, and they brought in their flushable wipes, a demo from last March, where they had a jar of water with toilet paper in it, and a jar of water with a flushable wipe. The flushable wipe still looks just perfectly fine, even since March, it's the same jar. So while we're considering, if you have a thought or a possibility of getting the flushable wording written off of those labels, that's an awesome thing for a legislation thing to do, because they're not flushable, they're flushable, they're not deteriorating, and they're clogging up, and we're having to spend a ton of money for a screening house to be able to get that kind of stuff out of the stream before it goes into the clarifiers and stuff, 'cause it plugs up the clarifiers and causes problems.
Yeah, I saw some nasty pictures of that in the sewer.
I mean, this is clear water that she was using, so there wasn't anything nasty about it, but just the fact that it's still sitting there since March implies that it takes a lot more than just water to make those things go away.
Yeah, I mean...
So, I mean, if we're worried about plastic bags and recycling and stuff, we might wanna worry about flushable wipes, not truly being flushable.
Well, I would like, well, we can never get, just like the straws, we can never get rid of them a hundred percent, there's always gonna be medical people that need those kinds of wipes.
They don't need to be flushed.
Well, but then you're talking about a biohazard, 'cause you're not supposed to put that kind of material into general trash, so...
You're not supposed to flush it either.
What about diapers?
There's bio...
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it. I'm not saying you're supposed to flush, I'm not saying that at all.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, it would be a little more complicated than just saying...
Although we... No, I understand, it's just...
Yeah.
Baby diapers.
It seemed like something that maybe it was worthwhile, and Sarita agreed, "Yeah, bring it up tomorrow." I said, "Okay, fine, I'll bring it up."
Yeah, thanks.
See what we can do.
You could come join us for our wastewater discussion anytime.
No, that's all right.
We have lots of fun with that.
My son used to leave on the Science Channel, 'cause he knew it would gross me out, like, "Ah, they're in the sewer."
Okay. Well, thank you very much, we appreciate your inputs.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Which brings us to Town Manager's Report. By the way, Eileen was excused, she's got issues that she has to deal with, and so she was able to be here for the earlier meeting, but asked to be excused from this meeting, so that's why she's not here.
I got a couple of things about the Planning Board from 121. Counselor Boyd, were you going to talk about those later on?
I was gonna bring them up in Counselor's comments.
All right, then, I will let you bring them up in Counselor's comments.
Why don't you bring them up now, just 'cause there's a little bit more attention now.
Okay. Good. Oh, me? My dog?
Yeah, you.
So, the two things, obviously, the Planning Board amended the master plan and included the NRPC pedestrian and bike study. They've added that as an appendices to the master plan. So that was one particular development. The other development is Director Thompson will be bringing forward some changes to zoning on a variety of different items. The three pieces that I felt were important takeaways, they're gonna be changing the definition of what a home occupancy is, adding a little bit more language to it, no longer making, you have to meet certain criteria, if you don't meet the criteria, it has to go for a more extensive, whether it be full site plan review or a conditional permit. It's not gonna be just a home occupancy where you fill out a form, they look at it and approve it or deny it. So they're looking to add a little teeth to the home occupancy piece. The second part is the telecommunications towers. The Director Thompson has done significant work, not just here in Merrimack, but outside of work. As a matter of fact, he alluded to that this was his thesis in college on the proliferation of cellular towers, and he took an interest in it. So what he's done is, he's looked at the federal rules, he's looked at the state rules, he's improved them and incorporated them into the proposed ordinance to add a little bit more substance, a little bit more teeth to it, and actually brings telecommunications piece no longer a function of the ZBA, potentially could be a function of the Planning Board. So that is the other thing that was brought. And then the third piece was the storage of travel trailers, and the definition of what is a travel trailer being on people's property. In very short definition, I've always thought a travel trailer has been a fifth-wheel camper that, but Director Thompson's proposed, and that includes RVs, Prevoz motor coaches, anything on wheels that is actually motorized, be considered as a travel trailer. That's number one, that's the definition. But number two, the focal point being, is that these travel trailers will not serve as permanent housing on a loss, only for temporary, if your house is being rebuilt, if Auntie Jean and Uncle Larry coming up from Florida, you know, they're allowed X amount of days, they can go to the town to get, you know, if they're gonna be here for a longer period, they can get a reprieve. So there's gonna be some flexibility in the proposed flexibility that community development would have over travel trailers being on residences. So there are additional changes, but to me, those are the three that were particularly noteworthy, that I was going to bring up under Counsel's comments, and how'd I do, Paul?
I got two and three, so, bustin', you got them all.
I got them all, cool. So, Planning Board will be having a public hearing in February. I got them all. Cool. So, planning board will be having a public hearing in February. I anticipate that the council will be looking at the proposal from the planning board in April, preferably after, after town elections, I think, is the timeline. So, but there will be a public hearing. So for, for people that have any concerns, because this was talked about at the planning board level, people will have, for lack of a better term, two bites at the apple to comment on it once at the public hearing at the planning board, and obviously when it comes to the town council for, for enactment and grossment, they'll be the first reading, the second reading, obviously the final, so.
Okay.
Okay. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Paul.
That is all that I had, is town manager's report.
Any, any questions on the town manager's report? Seeing none. We have no consent agenda under old business. The Town Center Committee charged revision follow-up. Nelson had another meeting he had to go to tonight, so we told him to go take care of the lower Sohegan River Advisory Committee, or whatever it is, or the lower Merrimack. I'm not sure which one it was. But we had made some slight additions or changes to the Town Center Committee charge that we'd like to approve. Trying to clean up.
Seconded.
Seconded by Lon Woods and seconded by Bill Boyd. Any comments or questions, or whatever?
Thanks to, thanks to Nelson and the members of the Town Center Committee for taking time to review the charge and make the appropriate changes.
Finley.
Because it is still in here, I'm sure it's correct, but we do have a Watson Park Committee still?
I don't think we do.
No, we do not. That should be taken out.
Good catch. I think that was mentioned at the time.
I thought it was.
I thought so, yeah.
Actually, you have-
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the first two pages are what was proposed, and then the, the back of it, there are two additional pages that says revised up top.
Yeah.
And those are the-
Taken out there. We don't have a lined out version of the changes. Okay. So it's not in there?
Very good.
The second set of pages?
Right.
Right.
The Watson Park Committee is on that first.
This, this page here without the red-
Already has the Watson Committee taken out.
Right, if you look, go, there's, it says revised up top.
Yep.
So that's the, those are the changes. So the revised-
This is the one that they're operating-
Correct.
With a January twenty twenty date at the end of the revision.
Correct. And it's, it's the revised document that we're voting on tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
Because there's other changes, too, because I know we pulled out the references to the code.
The building code.
The building code.
Tried to clean that up a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, we cleaned that up.
So based on that revised page, is there any other comments? Barbara?
Yeah, on the second page, under representative activities, if you go down to where the bullet points are, participate in public reviews and studies of the following critical issues in the town center. Pedestrian circulation as it develops after the opening of the new courthouse. Courthouse has been open now for a while. Maybe, maybe we can take that out and change that to new developments.
Yeah, we certainly can.
Since we're revising the document.
We could just leave out after opening the new courthouse, just review the pedestrian circulation as it develops.
Mm-hmm. Perfect.
If you don't. Yeah. Anything else? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to accept?
Was a motion in the second, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, it was. Did I, was I not paying attention?
Uh, I, I-
Who made the motion?
I would not question the chair, Mr. Chairman.
Who, who made the motion? Lon did?
And I seconded.
And, and you seconded. Okay. So a motion was made by Lon, seconded by Bill. Do you approve of the changes?
Absolutely.
Okay. So with the change of removing after opening the new courthouse, under the representative activities, first bullet, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. There's seven of us, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Which brings us to new business, ratification of collective bargaining agreements. We don't have any collective bargaining agreements that have been finalized at this date, and so we won't be doing that tonight. Right, Paul?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There are two collective bargaining agreements that are out of, are ending their term this year. One's with police officers, one's with the dispatchers. And we have been in discussions with them, but they, we haven't been able to resolve anything. They have probably about another week to get that settled.
Yes, both are taking the proposals back to their membership for vote. So we'll know by February sixth.
Which is that meeting that-
The special meeting.
Is our cutoff date?
Yes.
Okay. So we're down to the wire on that issue. That brings us to minutes. We have minutes from January eighth and January ninth. I honestly haven't looked at them, so.
Well, you weren't at the January eighth meeting, Mr. Chairman.
That makes that easy.
There you go. So, Mr. Chairman, I would move the Wednesday, January eighth, two thousand twenty town council meeting minutes.
That were so nicely chaired by you. That's great.
Yes. Thank you.
Motion by Bill and seconded by Lon. I saw that. To approve the minutes of January eighth, any changes? Lon? You seconded, I know. Any changes to the, to the wording of the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? I abstain. That passes six zero one with Counselor Koenig. Abstaining. The minutes of January ninth.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the Thursday, January ninth, two thousand twenty town council meeting minutes.
Second. Moved by Bill and seconded by Nancy. Any changes or additions, deletions, modifications?
I didn't have any.
Going twice? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. That brings us to the comments from the press, the public, or the council. Yes?
I'm sorry, I, would like to take this opportunity now to just discuss a little bit about what's going to go on next Wednesday for the public and for the town council. Next Wednesday is the, the meeting, the last budget meeting, which the council will start reviewing and making their recommendations, whether they would like to change something in the budget up or down. At that time, there, there will be motions and discussions. Every one of the department heads should be at the meeting and will be at the meeting, barring illness. So they'll all be here if you have additional questions. It's at six thirty on Wednesday, barring illness. If you do have questions that you would like answered beforehand, please send them to Eileen, email them to Eileen, and we'll make sure that, Eileen and myself, and we'll make sure that they go out. If you're looking at doing some kind of cut or add in a position or not in a position, or anything that needs some calculations, if you could get that to us beforehand, that's greatly appreciated, so that we're not wasting time on Wednesday night waiting for me to calculate things and get things calculated, maybe incorrectly, because we're rushing to get something through. So if you have some of that stuff, please talk to Eileen, so that we could prepare that for you on, on Wednesday night. And Eileen has said, like she said, we will be bringing together, in, as in years past, a proposal for some cuts and adds, to, to make up for what's going on with the fire overtime, as well as what we heard. The library did come in, and they have their, their new, new staffing, and, and we do have some other things, like we talked about with comp absences, and the other one was the, the transit, paratransit. So some of those things will be shown on Wednesday as well. So, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Quick question for Paul. Public will have an opportunity to, to comment?
Public, on that, usually on, on Wednesday night, that Wednesday night, there, there isn't a lot of comment. We will be holding a public hearing, and that will be on February thirteenth, and that's when the council will take public comment on the budget at that time. And then later after the public comment and the public hearings for all the Warren articles and things of that sort, the, the town, the town council will be finalizing their budget. There will always be a section, we always put public comment out there. We, if they, people want to come and talk, they can. But just know that there's another opportunity. If they don't get here on the twenty ninth, there's always that other opportunity on the thirteenth.
I only ask the question, because at the planning board meeting, the four students that came to talk about the pedestrian plan, I had communicated to them what was in the budget, and indicated to them that the council would be making their, their deliberations on that day, and they wanted to come and, and make a presentation regarding sidewalks. And I told them that it would be appropriate for them to attend. I just want to make sure that they'll be afforded the opportunity to speak.
Why would we?
That's, that's a council chair prerogative, to let them speak or not speak and give a presentation on that.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Nancy?
It should be part, it's not part of the budget, though. It's just the agenda for town council?
No, they, because sidewalks are being proposed for our budget, they wanted to talk about-
One sidewalk.
One sidewalk.
Eileen had texted me that we, that she had-
In the future, she's going to be doing a presentation on all the options.
Eileen had told me that we had budgeted two hundred thousand.
Correct.
Right, and they wanted, they want to talk-
The determination of where, we don't know yet.
Correct. So they wanted to talk about the allocation for the future of those particular sidewalks. So I just wanted, they're high school kids. It's part of a civic, it's part of a civic project. If I misspoke, I apologize. I just, I thought it'd be great to have four kids come to, to a budget meeting, so.
I'm sorry, did, may I misspoke?
No, yeah.
I totally agree with you.
And I apologize if I overshot time.
I totally agree with you. It's just that there is going, my understanding is, there's going to be a future short presentation about the five choices. And at that point, they may even have some feedback regarding that.
Okay.
That was my only thought, that's all. But at the chair, obviously.
But I, yeah, if, if they're willing to keep it very short, and, and want to make a quick comment or, or something like that, we can do that. I think we do normally have a public comment section at the beginning. So as long as they're not looking to sit down and put a projection up and stuff like that-
Yep. Okay.
We'll probably be able to work something out.
I will set expectations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nancy, thank you for the feedback.
Any other comments from the council? What I'd like to do is take a minute to just kind of review the election day planning that we've kind of passed a sheet around on. Are we good with that? Or do we need, do people have suggestions, comments or preferences?
You want to do St. John Newman, because you never do.
No, because Finley and Peter, you know, the, the Doubleman Twins had signed up for, for Jamies.
The Triplets, actually.
The Triple, actually, yeah, I mean, come on.
So I, I offered to do St. John, because it'd be covered, my only concern, and I, I don't mean to be selfish, but my, my daughter registered to vote, this will be her first election. I really would like to be, be a part of that, of that with her. So that's, so that's the only reason why it's like, I wanted to get back, so I could be able to vote for my daughter.
So how, how about this? I will type this up, send it out in an email, and if there needs to be switching or whatever, you can let me know, and I'll switch it. And whatever the, the duel is for that particular site, you all get together and arrange how you're going to fill up the day at that particular site.
Somewhere, somewhere, there is a floater, right?
Well, there will should be two for-
No, there's only seven of us.
Right.
We don't have Tom Mayhun anymore.
Well, I'm going to be around all day, so-
I am too.
If I'm, if I'm somewhere and somebody needs a break or needs to do something.
Well, so, so we have a floater, somebody can, you know, somebody can move around.
I don't mind doing that at all.
We'll do that. And it's nice sometimes to get away from the ones part you've been at all the time.
It is. That's right.
So we just need to coordinate that amongst ourselves, so that Len's not got an AG in her, in her face saying, "Where's my counselors?" kind of thing, so.
Right. So, like I said, I'll put that out, and every, that way at least everybody, everyone has a general idea of where everyone is for the day.
Okay.
And then you can work it among yourselves.
Yeah. So I mean, I, it, it might be prudent for you to consider yourself the floater or something at this point, and go, go where it makes sense, and then swap it around with folks.
Okay, that works.
If that's okay?
No, I have no problem with that.
Are you good with helping out at the election all day?
Yeah, I signed, signed up for St. John Newman.
Okay, great. Perfect. And you're going to be where?
I'll go to middle school this year, because I was only barber.
Oh, all right. Okay. All right. So any other comments from the press, from the council?
Uh, yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Please.
There is a retirement coming up, the Secretary for the Fire Department. Kathy Nader is retiring, so we'll probably hear more about that in the weeks to come. Also, I did attend the visit with Congressman Pappas this week, over at the MVD, and it was a great opportunity for the MVD to go ahead and explain what they've been doing and what they've been facing as far as trying to obtain funding and grants, as well as a little bit of the history of how the town came together to actually approve the funding for the project. What, he also went over some parts of the bill, and I actually have notes that I'll send to all of you. But the, the bill had three parts to it. One was to actually control the, any new creation of PFAS compounds in the future. I asked him how would that be done, and he, he said, he, of course, you know, they don't always have the details when they write these. So it's going to be under the purview of the EPA, of course, and they will do that. And, you know, I explained to him why our concerns about that, because we do have a company that does ad mixtures all the time and comes up with some new creations. So that was one piece of it. The other piece was to actually have grants of money that would be available to cities and towns that will have to install filtration systems. And it's something like five hundred million. And they, it'll be like doled out in increments over five years. It will also be retroactive. So just because the bill, you know, actually gets passed, say, two months from now, and EPA get take, you know, gets some funding going and whatever, what, it is retroactive, the grant is retroactive to the date that when you actually started your construction work. So that was very happy for MVD to hear. They were very pleased with that. And then there is some monitoring and whatnot that they're, that they're going to ensure that takes place as part of the bill. So there'll be monitoring of levels, testing, human use, health studies being done. And that's, you know, the three tenants of the bill. I asked if there were any penalties that were going to be attached to companies that actually did not follow the regulation, and apparently that wasn't written into the bill at this time. So, it was a good, oh, and then we went to the new site down on Front Street to, to see the work that's been done. They've actually got the basement laid, if you will, and the masons are coming in next week. They're about fifty percent complete on that one particular site. They hope to have that running May-June, as the news said. That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments from the council? Seeing none.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Bill and seconded by Barbara to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? Thank you very much. Please turn off your mic.